Just start from the beginning, seven o'clock. Pardon me, do we just turn to the flag?
...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you want to call Ben Huff?
Yeah.
D M M, Aaron?
Here.
Jeff Corpenny?
Here.
Um, at the start of the meeting, I asked everybody to take their assigned seats. And I kept the one with the sponsor seat, Jeff, so if you take your proper seat, Jeff, that'd be great.
No, I'm going there again, I made myself clear.
You're not going to take your proper seat? Please take that in a minute. Um, Jeff, I'll take his proper seat. Um, there's minutes out from the meeting if everybody wants to read them.
Okay, I think we've got other copies now.
Guest speaker tonight, we have Megan here. If the name's right, that makes sense.
Okay.
All right, thank you guys for having me back out. Do you still have a copy of the pamphlet I gave you last? If not, I made... You got yours? You get a new one here? I made some copies, so no big deal. You got it? Okay, awesome. Well, I just wanted to make sure I was out again tonight, just because the renewal actually is going to go into effect March 1st. So, if we're going to make a plan change, we should make that decision tonight. Um, but again, I'm just going to kind of reiterate what we talked about at the last meeting, so if there's any questions, you know, please don't hesitate to interrupt me. Um, I'm going to go through this spreadsheet. It's actually a couple pages back. It looks like this with the yellow on the top. This is really, um, kind of, I guess, the nuts and bolts of what your plan really is today and what it's going to renew to, and then what an option is for the township. On the left-hand side, this is your current plan that the township has through Anthem. The middle column is what you guys are automatically going to renew to March 1st if we don't make any decisions to do anything otherwise. The biggest difference for this option is that Anthem is doing away with your plan that you're currently on, and they're actually increasing the specialist co-pay to $60 from $50. The emergency room will be increased to 300 from 200, and there's a little bit of change in the prescription drug card benefit too. So, everything that's highlighted, those are basically the changes that will happen if we don't make a plan change from March 1st. Now, I would suggest, um, looking at that last column, I think this is a good option for the township. I think it makes the most sense for you guys to save a little money in premium and increase the deductible amount a little bit by going from $2,500 to $3,000. Keep the funding plan the same, so the benefits are going to remain the same as they are today. Um, the only difference is, we're going to go ahead and, um, increase the level of what could be funded if it's needed out there. So, I definitely think it makes sense. It's going to save you some money throughout the year on premium. Um, the totals are at the bottom. You can see down there at the bottom what you currently are paying, what your renewal will go to, and then what this option is with Anthem.
That's out on this page too, right?
Yep, exactly, yes. That's just an individual breakdown of the rates on the next page.
But it gives the total month of premium.
Yep. Exactly.
I'm comfortable with it. I think you explained it really well last month, and everybody's had a chance to review it, so...
Okay, do you guys...can you guys think of any questions for me? I mean, does it all make sense? Okay.
I, uh, I mean, I reviewed it. I talked to Megan about it, so if you guys looked at it, I mean, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and, um, go with the, yeah, I guess, the second option, with the option D-56, RF-7.
I'll second that motion. I'd like to discuss just to make the points on...um, if I did the math right by going to options, basically, we just have a higher personal deductible on our way.
Actually, what will happen is the funding account, well, they'll just have a higher exposure for the township. The deductible amount that everybody's responsible for is going to stay the same, so we won't have any change in benefits.
If I did the math right, um, it's a $2,749 difference for annual...
Yes, mhm.
Uh...
For the premium, yep.
That starts from March to March.
Exactly, yes. Those rates are going to be good until the end of February next year, so...
And then you'll review it again, do the second...
We'll review it again. We'll fill out those applications, do all the paperwork, and take a look at it at that time.
Prices again next year, right?
Exactly, yeah. I keep telling everybody that.
I have a question.
Okay, awesome. Well, if you guys want to go ahead and make this change, I will need two signatures, and Jenny, you are the contact person with Anthem, so I need your signature.
I'm going to ask the board on that.
Okay.
Um, Dan?
Yeah.
Dan?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Awesome, okay. There's two spots. You would think this day and age we wouldn't need all this paperwork, but I'm telling you, with insurance stuff, it's easy.
Thank you for coming out.
Thank you guys so much. If you have any questions though throughout the year, that's what I'm there for. My information's all in front of that packet, just give me a call, okay?
What would be a different card or something, since it's a different plan?
Actually, no, it's just going to be the same group number and everything, um, so everything should...it won't matter. It'll be the same thing. You may actually end up with new ID cards, just because at renewal time, sometimes Anthem automatically just kicks them out to you guys. So, if you do get one, it wouldn't surprise me, but, um, until you do see that new one, you can still use your old one, just like you do today.
First, you're making the charge again.
No problem. Thanks, guys. Have a good night.
Do we have any other guest speakers? Correspondents? Jeff?
Um, I have another letter. My name is Jeff Corpenny, and I anything, that's all it says. Um... What did he say? That is all I have.
Any correspondence, Dan?
I'll need some anonymous letters, Jenny. I know we've been several of them. I'd like to have copies of those too. I know last year we had some also.
Okay, do you want last year's also?
Yeah.
Okay.
Some of them, uh, Mr. Huff has taken home, and then we've discussed. Others were bought here without...I mean, I haven't seen any of them until they come here.
Which ones did I take home that we didn't discuss, Mr. Corpenny? Would that be like the stuff you picked up and took home after the last meeting?
I'm discussing, I recall, one that wasn't complimentary of anybody here. We all read it, it was on the table. Dan was taking care of it. It had to do with the trash hauling. That's how we were alerted.
He doesn't have that, I have it.
See, I'm applying that I took it, so we'll jump on it.
I'm not applying anything, I'd like a copy of that.
Well, you just said I took it home, like...
What I'm saying is, it was an anonymous letter here. We all saw it, I don't have a copy of it, we all reviewed it. It wasn't ready to be public or anything, but yet we had these others come in here, and they get top billing, and they're taking everybody's time.
I was right to read to the public.
Was it?
Yeah.
So, again, please state what I took home and I did not share. Because word just came out of your mouth, Jeff.
One I've requested, just to verify it again, I'd like all the anonymous correspondence that the township's received in 2012 and '13.
So, are you going to answer my question?
I'm not here...
Can you tell me what letters I took home and I did not share?
They never came back to the meeting to discuss, as I recall.
Which of my letters?
The topic, that's...that's why I'm requesting them, I'd like to review that.
Then why did you imply that I took them home?
My point is, they were not...I don't recall them being red verbatim, I believe they were...they weren't red verbatim to the public.
Please state the minutes that Jeff implied that I took somebody else home, that I did not, thank you.
But, you know, that's how we were notified in one case where one of the haulers has come that none of us knew about. That one had photographs and stuff on it as well, so... Did you say it's my turn to correspond?
Do you have any correspondence, Jeff?
Sure. Is everyone else done with theirs?
That's why I moved on to you.
Okay. Um, I noticed on the agenda, before we get too far, you took the trash mandate off. Is there a reason, or is there a...are you going to report on it, or what were we...
Um, I don't know if I was going to report, we turned it over to the prosecutor office.
Uh, right before I left, I got a quick email from them, and I think they're waiting for direction from you to pursue this.
That was today?
Yeah.
Well, then I haven't reviewed it, I haven't seen it.
Not much of an email, it sounds to me like they're waiting for you to...
Sure, and I've been in correspondence with them over the past month on this, so I don't know what the issue is, yeah.
Well, from what I understand, we have a motion, the board as a whole had a motion to proceed, apparently they need to be confused here with it, because I don't believe they've moved forward with anything, they're waiting on you. You are the contact, correct?
Yes, do you understand what I just said? I'm in a contact with them over the past month, okay? What email you received today, I have not seen yet.
It goes back to my question then, is why isn't on the agenda if you'd like...I would like to see it, not overlooked.
I thought it was already turned over to the prosecutor.
It did. It did get turned over too.
Well, my request is to put it back on the agenda, if you don't want to talk about tonight, then the next month. Under correspondence, I did have more residents contact me that are being overcharged. At this point, all I can do is give them Big O's phone number.
Since I'm in charge of the trash, did you tell them to contact me?
If you don't mind...
No, I'm asking you.
I'm not here for question and answers, correspondence.
Yes, we are.
No, we're not.
Since I'm in charge of the trash.
When you're done with your question and answer, I'll get back to my correspondence.
When you talked to a resident, did you say you need to call Mr. Huff?
No.
And they...why didn't?
I told them they need to talk to Big O, because my experience has been that they have told me that it's a contract between them and the customer, and they are no longer talking to the trustee to give them information to help them.
And then you want them to come to me so we can move forward, but I will contact Big O.
I'm not going to argue with you. I'll continue to help residents to get them the information they need to get their adjustment.
So, why did...
Now, to get back to my correspondence, a lady called and informed me that on the recycling, that Big O is only coming every other week. Now, our con...it's another contract violation, there are several Big O has been violating, so hopefully that's been resolved, and they're going to be doing what they're supposed to do. But that was the first that had been brought to my attention, that the recycling was not...
Jenny, please let me know if you're stating that I'm fully unaware of any of these calls that Jeff has received regarding, you know, the trash or the recycling.
That's why I sent the correspondence I gave to you. So, there appear to be issues with the recycling part of the program. On Guthrie's Road, uh...
It's Guthrie's, we'll go ahead and...
Whatever, you know which road it is, there's two houses on there. Uh, brought it up last month, I had another call this month, a person didn't leave a number again. Apparently, there's still issues there, so...
Which would be what?
They don't...they're not leaving details, they just, uh...
They just said, "I live on Guthrie Road, there is an issue." That's what they said.
Right, but we also know that we've had issues over there before, so I don't know if they're reoccurring or what.
What would the issue be?
Well, I asked Dan what you did before, uh, and he said that you filled in some holes and you mashed it down. Now, I haven't been over there in a couple weeks, so I don't know what the problem is, but we need to address it. So, those are two...
Well, if we don't know what the problem is, how are we going to address it?
Well, we get in a little truck, and you drive over and take it up.
Yeah, we've been up and down the road.
So, you don't think there's any issues there?
I'm sure it needs that one. We've got six inches of rain in the past month.
Yeah, it'll need some gravel soon as it dries up a little bit, we'll take care of it.
I'm very doubtful, so they call, there's a lot of mess they've said. I live on Guthrie Road, there's issues.
That would be the first time that you've questioned that. It's my correspondence, and I'm bringing this forth to the board.
We'll bring it all, but, so, go ahead, move on.
Do I question and answer you during your correspondence?
Go ahead, Jeff, move on.
Yes.
Do I have the table to complete this? Okay, um, also, I don't see on the agenda for the road grant, and that does need to discuss. Spoke to Park today on that, and the board needs to discuss that, so where do you want to put that? That work here?
Your business and work.
We can detail on that later. Uh, it's got the numbers here that Jenny had given me last month on the park, so I'll save that for Park. Uh, if you still had questions for Mr. Park, did you get this?
I did.
Okay, so I guess you guys get correspondence too, that, yeah, I'm not going to assume you did, but March 22nd, Cambridge, Ohio Plan is having a seminar, so if you had questions on Mr. Park, like I know you have in the past, it'd be a great opportunity for you.
Back to Mr. Park, what do I have?
Well, Ohio Plan, and, uh, just assuming he'll be there, but, uh, just do their group that's putting it on.
Almost there.
Got the LTAC news letter, the Licking Conservation District news letter. Health Department report shows lowland green with numbers sewage permits, wells, poll name, nuisance complaints, and that kind of statistics. Yesterday, I attended the Licking County Planning Committee's Commissions meeting. Jerry Newton has been, as you guys are well aware, has been holding a separate meeting prior to the monthly planning commission meetings. Those are real informative, and that was yesterday, and they're holding those...yesterday was 6:00. Uh, I think their regular meeting starts at 6:45, so it's 30, 40 minutes of meeting with trustees, and they're going to be sending the board some information about that. And I think that's it for correspondence. I'll send this one.
We want reports, safety.
I had a note on safety. Don't want to dwell on it or anything, but I did want to go on the record that I'm disappointed in the board under safety. We had the opportunity, I brought it forth to the board. The county had gotten a large grant for signage, and it was guaranteed mine, our township had $700 towards that. Would have needed the cooperation of at least another board member to make that happen, and the reason that it's under safety is because it's the higher reflective signage program. So, I'm hoping that sometime down the road, we'll have an opportunity like that again, and perhaps I'll have cooperation from another member of the board to bring those funds to us to make it safer on the roads.
Safety, not by a company. Zoning.
I have nothing to report to you this month.
Relax, don't worry. Under zoning, I didn't have the opportunity to attend the junk car hearing, it's not actually zoning, but it is handled through the zoning inspector. Do you have meeting minutes for that this evening?
Yeah, I said I'm over here in your spot.
Well, I'd like to request a copy of the audio tape as well, and whatever documentation is presented, so I can be, um, educated on what residents might be pulled forth, or whatever it's about this time. When would you be able to have that for me? Can you leave it down here?
Yeah.
Couple days, or...
Oh, it'll be here.
How long's it take to do it?
Within a week.
Okay, thank you. One week is fine.
Is there any board commissions, zoning appeals?
The zoning appeals board had a meeting, um...
Uh, just that we agreed on variance with the western property, and that it's being looked into on the Licking County codes and everything, and, uh, hopefully everything was still okay with Licking County's office.
Under zoning, before we move on, it'd be kind of a miss not to at least mention to see a volunteer group conduct themselves in a professional manner. They did a very good job of that, and I think we need to recognize that. These people take their time and their energy, and in particular, Mr. Zinsmeister, he really put his time in. As the secretary of that board, I think he really needs kudos for how he handled it. So, I just wanted...
I'll second that.
Just wanted that in the record, because they don't get paid mileage, they don't get paid time, and it's pretty obvious he had to put a lot of effort into that to bring all the facts forward.
Well, speaking of the board members of the appeals board, I want to bring it to your attention, Jeff. I have seen a video on YouTube where you say the Ethics Commission said that Jack is ...should not be on our board. However, I have here in my hand, after talking to the Ethics Board, a guideline that says Jack can serve on that board. I also have a letter from the prosecutor with seven positions as to why Jack can serve on that board, and I noticed in correspondence, you failed to mention that I had sent you a copy of the email from Amy saying that Jack is legal to serve on that board, and there was no conflict of interest. Um, and I circled the two pertinent pieces of information from the Ethics, uh, High Ethics Commission, and I circled the two places that they specifically pointed out to me, and I will leave these copies with you.
Thank you.
Is that all I had on that packet?
Still need to retract your zoning inspector statement.
Is that all I had on that packet?
That's all I have.
So, I'd like to make a comment on that. I won't be commenting on anything that is potentially a investigation through the Highway Ethics Commission.
Correct, oh, yeah.
Well, the High Ethics Board said, if there's any further issues, that I can call them back and send them a letter, and they will issue a finding on it.
Thank you for your time. Do you want to make sure Jeff gets that?
Yes, that's why I put it at his place.
I actually...
Why didn't you?
I actually didn't acknowledge the fact that you were sending an email. I did receive it, and it was addressed to whomever it may concern. It was also marked very clearly there that it was client privilege confidential, which is a little disturbing, but, you know, yes, I did receive your email, so if that's what this is, I'm well aware of it.
He didn't acknowledge you.
Please state in the record that Jeff took a little bit of the paperwork that Patty Bowlen passed along to the Highway Ethics Commission.
I'll add it to my file. It's rather long.
Thank you. Is that it, Dave? That you had on all that? That was it?
Yeah, thank you.
Correspondence plan? Is that it? Do you have anything I can complain? Correspondent committee?
$25 a gallon, and a few oxen, 125 rental. Two free ones, Danny Van Buren, and a funeral dinner.
Do you have a report for me, for the board? No report?
We didn't have no meeting this month.
I had asked for a report on anything done, that includes the rentals and billing, so...
That's what those are.
That's what Jenny has. I want to...I asked for a separate report on anything that was done.
Well, there wasn't nothing done. I was waiting on paper towels and trash bags, and there they sat.
Obviously, there was four rentals, and I asked for paperwork on that, and I did not see that from you, correct?
She's got it.
Okay, and then I also asked for a report on any upcoming events from now until the next meeting, so you guys don't plan on doing any...
You probably talked to the meeting minutes, didn't you, in the last meeting?
Was I talking to you? Thank you. So, you guys don't plan on doing any, no action from now till next meeting?
No.
Till our next meeting, or the next Thursday's meeting?
When is it? Before Easter?
I don't know what the date is. What the date is?
Easter's March 31st, which is on a Sunday.
It'll be before, I guess.
It would be before Easter, yes.
You have a meeting too, don't you? Don't have a meeting in March?
The 20th, I think it is.
I noticed there's no cut, did I miss it?
I just now realized I forgot to do that. I will cut that and leave it down here.
All right, you'll leave it in here?
Yeah, well...
I can't get it in here.
I'll, uh, get it signed and drop it off to you.
All right.
If we did move a motion...
Yes, I forgot to do it.
Again, the board made a motion, and it passed to, um, that they wanted reports from the Park Committee, which would be reports from the prior 30 days, and then the next, you know, upcoming 30 days, which obviously failed to come to the board tonight, so, um, please try a little harder for next time.
What do you mean, like, events?
I want a report of anything that you guys do, anything that has to do with the park, you know, the community building, any money spent, any money taken in, anything that is done. I want to know everything that is done over there, so...
Well, you're the one that has to buy the stuff. I can't buy it.
I don't take the money for that. I want to report on anything done. If you guys do any kind of maintenance over there that doesn't cost anything, I want to report what you guys did.
But you bought it, you didn't, didn't you?
I didn't say I didn't, Jeff.
Okay, excuse me, trying to...
How's come the sink ain't been fixed?
We'll get to that, it's on my notes, okay? So, from now on, so when we have a meeting next month, I want to report on anything from the previous 30 days that you guys did, anything you plan on doing for the next 30 days. So, next meeting in March, it's going to be from, you know, meeting you did from now until March, I want everything done. And then I want a list of anything that you plan on doing, so whether it be planting flowers, cutting grass, raking mulch, anything that you guys plan on doing, I want it ready.
Well, they should have their meeting minutes for that, at least in a draft form, and that should have some...
I'm not talking about the meeting minutes, Jeff.
That covers everything, every action that they'll be taking.
It does. Covers every action they've taken. So, our meeting minutes come from when we go out, I'll sell them...
It's prior to their event, isn't it?
Yeah.
So, what else would...they wouldn't be doing anything else?
And doors never been touched, they were told, um, good while...
The board did receive correspondence from the board, and there's...
The doors are still as wiggly as they was.
So, they have reported to us as a board, what do you want to do?
So, that should be in writing? It should be in...
It wasn't writing.
It was presented to the board last month.
I told all three of you.
Well, then where's the...where's the report this month?
It's the same report, there is no...
No, I'm asking for a report every month. It should be actually two reports every month.
Why would we have to report it this month?
Because the board made a motion, and it passed, um, to get a report from anything done from now till last month. Anything you plan on doing. So, from now on, we want a report, anything that we're gonna do, okay?
They've already provided that.
No, so let me just put this in perspective. Next month in March, it'll go from March to April's meeting. I want to know who's going to mow the grass. I want to know who's gonna...
I ain't mowing the grass.
Hold on, not the...I heard the meeting minutes.
And doors have been...
They said that they're not going to, uh, I believe the motion you decided as a board, your board said you were not going to do that.
Do what, mow the grass?
What was the motion, Barb? It's in the meeting minutes.
The trustees take care of the mowing.
Okay, let's use another example. Are you going to plant flowers?
Nope.
You're not going to plant flowers? Are you going to rake mulch? You're going to do anything?
Yeah.
Okay, anything, anything you plan on doing, I want to report that, this floor, okay? Because I'm not getting thrown under the bus like I did, you know, before, on this whole merry-go-round stuff.
How is it you got thrown under the bus? What have you been blamed for that you didn't do? How do you...
I was totally oblivious of it, Jeff. I had no idea that you guys were doing this, and I got thrown under the bus. Now, the township's liable to pay money, okay? That's how I got thrown under the bus.
I can't think of a grant or a process that could be more transparent or public than that one.
You brought it to this board, you brought it to this board and said we're going to work... You brought it to this board right here, and you said, "We want a false application to get this piece of equipment, we want to buy this piece of equipment, this is how we're going to do it, this is what it's going to cost." You never did...not saying you never did that, the Park Committee never did that, okay? So, I'm not getting thrown under the bus by the Park Committee again. So, I want to report every month of what they plan on doing, and then also what they did. That's what I want.
What exactly is your allegation, and who are you making it against then?
I'm not making any allegations, I'm telling you what...
You're just making a lot of noise.
No, this is what the board decided last month, okay? Whether you took part in voting on, I don't know.
I understand, but you moved your motion, so why are you beating that horse?
Because I didn't get it done.
Why is the... That's the paperwork she asked for.
We've been asking about the doors and the sink in the building being fixed for the past three months, and they're not fixed yet.
Why hasn't Jeff fixed them?
Stay in the department. Go ahead.
I like that why Mr. Corpenny wants to apply for a grant he's concerned about, that he hasn't gotten down in, but he don't care that the community of the township's got another 15 to 1800 bucks in that he took off now to the park that's going to cost us a ton of kids, that he was illegal, don't be just...don't. So, he don't care where the money comes from. To me, he should still hold his check, make him pay for this, not the tax pay.
I completely agree with people's First Amendment rights, but when it's a false statement, some things are illegal.
Now, I mean, you're false, thank God.
There's been nothing illegal done, we have received correspondence from the prosecutor...
The trustee voted no illegal. Do you have that in writing? The trustee voted no, you're lying! You have it in writing that nothing illegal's been done?
Are we going to have open forum, or is this how we're handling it tonight?
I'm running maximum.
Well, you've been kind of open, so...
I have a right to know how you're doing. Is it open forum?
Um, if I'm not mistaken, there, of course, there was no official vote made to remove the merry-go-round, but two out of the three trustees did state, "We do not want that removed," and it was in the minutes. But two out of the three trustees did state, we do not want that removed. And it was in the minutes. It's been on record. But all of a sudden, the merry-go-round is removed and the clothesline is put up. And this is what this whole issue is because the Park Committee just does what the Park Committee wants and the people should know what they're doing. We elected you. We didn't elect the Park Committee. They're volunteers. We want you to control it.
Along with the people wanting, you know, want to know, I want to know. I'm not getting thrown under the bus on anything again, okay? So to the Park Committee, we made a motion and a vote last meeting that you guys will fill out reports and it will be brought to the board.
What kind of report are you talking about?
On a written report, okay? So you should have a report tonight, anything that was done from tonight to the past meeting.
You have?
I do. Words it up.
Everything that's transpired is into, I wrote it down. It was a couple, Mr. Van Buren got the building for, for rental, or is it free? He got it free.
He got it free.
And then he had a funeral. And that's also a.
I already had some writing. I mean, did you get one, Dan?
Well, there wouldn't be checks for those ones.
Okay, I, I don't see one here.
Report is in writing. I give you a report when I have something. I also give you copies and stuff, but I still have a report in writing of what I paid you, am I correct?
Would you mind writing this out?
Just lay it down, Jeff, okay?
He's making reports for them because I just turned the page out.
Before the end of the meeting, she'll have two or three things written down that he's requested.
See, he, he's running the Park Committee.
That's not.
He is running.
Who is the Park Committee?
That is ethics issue. That right there. He wants to talk, to talk ethics here, Jeff.
No, I want, excuse me, I want him to answer. Does he feel it's fair that he does not put no money back into this for the merry-go-round back in the park? In other words, it's costing the taxpayer like these people need and all of us in here, the money put back into the park so we can have it back in, like he says, to make money off of it. Now, that don't make sense, guys. He makes seven hundred bucks a month. It's gonna cost a fifteen, eighteen hundred bucks. He's the ones to pay for it because he's the one took it out.
And yes, it will get put back in and it will cost the township's money, but it will get put, put back in.
I don't agree with your narrative. That's all I.
I know you would because it's your paycheck.
And you, if you're with it, yeah.
None of the facts.
Once again, not the government.
The horse is dead when you start beating it and you're keeping on beating it. It's not gonna come alive. It's a dead horse.
We'll move on.
It ain't dead.
Remember the grits? We'll, we'll move on.
This is not dead.
All right, um, a couple of things I had, I guess, before the Park Committee, which would be the community building.
Hang on, hang on, before you move on, I don't, sorry to interrupt you. Uh, there was another item on there and it was the, uh, here. Did you have an update, Barb, on the payment? Did you talk to him again? Has the board sent the check?
Wow, I should have this all in writing. It's like, look at it, huh?
No, this is this board.
I should have a report. I should have a report.
This is the action of this board. So the last meeting, the check came around, Jenny cut the check properly. I signed it. In the letter they gave us the last meeting, we've spoken with them and then Barb told me and her board sent it.
They called and said what, they wanted the check or they're gonna turn it into collections.
So you spoke with the playground probably. That should be in your report. Anything that you do should be in that report.
This board, Jenny, did you mail the check?
It wasn't signed.
Okay. So what is your, what are you doing with that?
Well, let me tell you something, okay? I'm gonna use this phrase. I'm not a rubber stamp. I do not put my name on anything, okay? Nothing was brought in front of me prior to purchasing that, so I'm not putting my name on it, Jeff, okay? That is my vote. I'm sorry if you disagree with that.
Every piece of public record's been available from day one.
Has not.
If you went back to the meeting minutes that Barb fulfilled President Huxford West and has it written down of what he, are you satisfied with that? Is there anything else you'd like to know?
I, I'll have to review it. It should have been brought to me before the meeting, so.
If you don't mind, let's see what we have.
If you don't mind, thank you.
It's a report to the board, isn't it? Isn't it a report to the board?
Give it to the president.
Yeah.
Not the chore.
Do you want a public record, put in public record, okay? Um, for the Park Committee Community Building, um, I know the sink was brought up. We tried doing some stuff, snaking it out, uh, run snake in it. We tried, um, get some drain on all the stuff, putting it in there. We've done it a couple of times. Um, it's, I guess it's still not working. So how do you guys feel, Jeff, out of having?
I just, I get somebody.
Have a minute, clean it out?
Cleaned out.
Um, if you guys are comfortable with that, I'll make a motion that I'll just go and take care of it. I'll, uh, I'll get ahold of somebody and, um, see if I can maybe get them in there this week. When's your next building rental, do you know?
March fifth.
Uh, that doesn't really address the plumbing problem itself, why it's plumbed just to go out in the alley. Yeah, I'd like to take a look at, trying to maybe get it. Yeah, I don't know if that's proper or not. It doesn't seem right to me that, that the drain is still going to an alley.
Well, I'm sure a lot of people sue it. It runs right out in the gutter and alleys.
If you have an expert come out, if you could maybe ask them, um, and also there's no, there's no, um, valve underneath the thing.
A valve? Like to shut it off?
There's a leak right underneath of it too. It needs corrected, so. If you said you looked at it.
Explain what you mean by valve. Well, what I looked at was the leak, so.
Okay, well, if you think it's okay.
Is it, is there a leak in the water line? Is there a leak in the drain line?
If you looked at it, you should be familiar with it.
Can you communicate with me here and let me know what's going on?
If you've seen it, blown too distal, so.
No, I got a better one. Why didn't he fix it?
That's work.
I've been over there.
Well, I'll make a motion that, uh, I'll contact somebody this week and see if I can get somebody here this week, um, before the fifth, before the next meeting, to, uh, see if they can address the sink situation. Um, the funds will come out of the Park Committee to do that.
Take a second, your question.
Oh, second.
So you, you just do this on your own and, and court it out and do you make the decision yourself then?
Of what?
Of who you're gonna call.
I have no idea who I'm gonna call.
But you're gonna make that decision on your own and you're gonna just.
You want to wait till the next meeting? I'm gonna list the names and wait till the next meeting. Is that what you want to do?
I don't think that would hurt anything. I really don't. This problem's been for a long time.
Okay, so do we want to tell people they can't rent the building for the next thirty days because the sink's not working?
I don't think that would be necessary.
You know, take the sink off so they can't use it or?
I don't think that would be necessary. But what kind of events are coming up, Barb?
Well, you got the.
He thinks it's not necessary. It was the trustees thing.
Church thing that's, uh, people's coming from out of state for it. And, um, we've got Rosemary Klippinger, she's gonna run it on the eleventh.
Do they typically use the water much, same for those events?
Well, same, if you put two gallons, it's overflowing.
Needs to be repaired.
So.
Just get it fixed and be done.
I will contact somebody. I don't know who we use. I'll try to do somebody local.
I'm gonna take roll call on the motion to repair the plumbing that was seconded, made by Ben, seconded by Dan.
The motion is to have the plumbing repaired? Is that what you said?
It'd be to have the, the sink fixed, to have the leak unplugged.
Okay.
And to look at the valve.
Yeah, check for all, check for all the leaks under there. It is a valve. That's what you call.
Is it a supply line or a drain line?
Oh, this is a supply line, Mr. Huxford.
Okay, so that's worse leaking it. Hot or cold?
As a matter of fact, whoever plumbed it plumbed it backwards, okay?
So he didn't.
So I really don't know if it's hot or cold because backwards means. But you're, why don't you take a look?
It is backwards. The hot's where the hot and cold is.
No, I'm, I'm, I've plumbed things.
Can I get a roll call on the motion?
Can I, can I call, can I call you this one? It's unplugged the sink then? You're gonna call for it?
I don't have, I don't have a professional snake that would require for that section.
Jeff, roll call motion.
We did, uh, clear it out the best we could.
You're choosing a roll call.
Can I have your vote on the motion?
We definitely need to fix. You've been in six months ago. You heard it now.
So that's a yes.
Yes.
My name is.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, so.
All right, one other thing I have on the Park Committee is we need price on new swings. I've asked for that for six, eight months. How the Park Committee haven't got anything, so before spring, I, we need to do something there. We have to replace those swings. They're residential, not commercial, so.
Well, it's not really that much different than the other thing. It's, uh, if you take the same stance that you did on the other things and call it recommendations.
Oh, that's fine.
If that's what you want to do.
If that's fine. If that's what you guys want to do, then that's fine.
No, it's not what we want to do.
I believe the Park Committee brought to the board and they said that they want a new swing because they were, those ones were classified.
Based on, based on the recommendations, which we definitely have, is recommended they be commercial. I agree that they should be, just like everything else should be.
But he didn't, he didn't recommend we take them out, right? He just recommended they should be commercial?
Irrecommending, they didn't, they don't have to take them out.
Okay. I definitely feel like anything that's replaced in that park should be replaced with something that doesn't have an issue. So when it does come to the point where those are not functional or appear to be unsafe at that point.
So we're gonna leave them until they're unsafe or unfunctional, unfunctional?
Well, you don't want to wait till someone gets hurt on it. My opinion is that we shouldn't have anything in that park like that, but if, if we do replace it, it should be done with something proper.
So are we gonna replace them or not? What are you guys thinking? If we don't need to spend the money, we won't do it?
We're just leaving them where they are.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
So no action needs taken. But that doesn't mean that you couldn't hit Price and if you requested the Park Committee to do it, I'm sure they'd be happy to.
I requested it since March, you know. Okay, um, Park Committee. That's all I have on the Park Committee. Anybody else have anything? Thank you. Unfinished business. Oh, unfinished business. I did get the digitalized.
Yeah, I see him.
Digital. All right, um, under unfinished business. Do you have anything?
We did the insurance, is all we need.
Yeah.
Yeah, insurance. Um, the only thing I have is in correspondence with Amy over the past month on the trash, so.
Oh, you do have some updates on that?
I said, over correspondence with her over the past month, which can be verbal, you know, or email that you received, okay? Um, she asked me to, I got a list, um, from a resident, Dogwood, um, five addresses.
Oh, so I didn't.
Still picking up, um.
Ed and Ralph.
Uh, he's a resident. Um, so Amy asked me if there are any other addresses. So if anybody else has any other addresses in the township where CMI is still picking up, um, I notified her about five in Dogwood and one on Laurel Hill.
I saw them on Laurel Hill. They're picking up their Hills daughters, but I don't know their address. Right next to the beach house.
I'll get.
Yeah, flat tire right in front of there.
I'll get the original address. I just told her the general location.
Yeah.
If anybody else has an address, let me know, um, so we can forward that over. So unfinished business, it's number seven.
And is that gonna be on the agenda then, so it's not forgotten next month? Get an update on it?
I'll forget.
Can I make it old business thing essentially?
I have a question because you're talking about trash, right?
Yep.
You were put in charge of taking care of the Big O problems, correct?
Right.
So if somebody's calling Mr. Chorkening, shouldn't he let you know there's a problem? Or should he just let it sit until a month passes and no, nothing has been done to resolve the issue for a month? Shouldn't he at least somehow contact you via email, phone call, whatever, to tell you a resident has called, there's a problem with Big O?
I would prefer it that way, yes.
I'd let the resident know all the facts on it and how to contact Big O or get it resolved immediately themselves.
You're in charge of any issues, not Mr. Chorkening. I'm sorry, Chorkening said that wrong. Okay, I'm making sure, I'm, I, I want to hear that and see it on record, that you are in charge and people should be contacting you to include the other trustees if they get phone calls.
Anybody have a problem with the trash, Jeff, please let me know.
If somebody doesn't give me their name, it's kind of hard to relate to you. And you, and, and like I already said, my experience.
And there's no problem if they didn't give a name.
Resident has to talk directly with Big O because they won't help resolve it as I did with Mr. Livingston.
They won't help resolve it if I call them and say, hey, we have a problem?
In my experience, they have not. I want to.
That's your experience.
But by the resident talking to Ben, doesn't that give Ben names then to go to the prosecutor about issues?
If somebody called me and said, hey, I'm getting, excuse me, Jeff.
He is the primary.
If somebody called me and said, I'm getting over図図 on their bill, I will contact Big O and I will say, listen, I talked to this resident, this is who it is, this is their address, they have a problem with their bill. And that was in the past, okay, with Mr. Livingston. They won't correct it. They will make it right.
Because you're the point of contact through Big O, am I correct?
Correct.
Not Mr. Chorkening, you.
I'll remind you that we still are a board here. We're not a.
And, and the board made a motion to put me in.
Designated as the point of contact. Ben Huxford is designated as the point of contact. There was a vote made on that, correct?
I'll continue to inform residents how they can get it resolved.
So then, so he just wants to do something, is what he said?
That's what, exactly what's going on. It's called narcissism.
If somebody calls.
Somebody else, somebody else had a question, okay?
I'm gonna help them.
Control with narcissism because of narcissism.
All right, so if anybody else has any other addresses, please let me know. I will be in contact. We'll move on. All right, um, any other unfinished business?
I just have that right.
I guess it really is unfinished business, but that's what's next.
We are deciding new business. Okay. You have any unfinished business, Jeff?
No, the road business is pretty pertinent, so.
Okay, so we're gonna make that a new business. Um, under new business, do you have anything, Jeff?
No.
Um, a couple of things I had, um, actually, let me back it up. No, I guess it'd be under new business. Um, under new business, I had talked to, uh, actually, we had a problem, a couple of problems this winter, which I'm, you know, some of you are aware of, in Dogwood. Um, where we plow or send it, wherever, there was cars parking up on the road, um, especially in the cul-de-sac, when it's kind of on the hill and all that kind of stuff. And, uh, I don't know, I've talked, I've talked to one of the residents back here that attends all the meetings and kind of maybe got some input from them. Um, on what he maybe thinks that we could do or suggest to do. It's, you know, it's tough for us to get around, in particular on the right side, when they're parked on the road. When we drop off that hill, whether we plow or, I knew the other day we went out in a dicey, we had a hard time getting around them. What, they sent out quarterly news, I, I believe it's quarterly newsletter to all the residents, um, in Dogwood. And this is just a suggestion, um, without putting up signs or anything else back in there. Uh, what do you guys think about asking them to put in a newsletter, you know, if people could not work on the road, you know, for maybe November to March, something like that? Um, just in inclement weather. And that's currently doing it in summer time, because we don't have any problem.
I'd say when the weather.
When the weather, yeah. And I know why they do it, you know, because they're probably to drop off and they want to work that property.
It's nothing new.
But, but we have a hard time getting around them in the files. I mean, some of us don't know that, but, but we do. So I don't know. What are your guys' suggestions, opinions? Don't do anything?
It's been, it's been an issue like that since Dogwood's been there.
So should we just let it go?
It would encost me and need to ask them to put it in the newsletter, certainly.
But that's why.
They also have, they used to have a website and like, still they could put it there too. They probably put it on the website.
So if, um, I was tweeting again, I mean, you think it's worth asking them to do or can you just go and sign it? I mean, I don't want them to sign it. I don't have to. They got those signs back in there.
No, I'd ask them.
If you do sign it, you probably would have to do a resolution and do it legally with the, there's a process you have to go through if you do that with the snow removal.
And if we do that.
Emergency snow removal signs.
You know, we should just have put in there that, it's not all in Red Bull and Green Township. You know, the part that's in, like, it really doesn't affect us because they don't park the Honda Road.
Yeah.
What do you think? If, if maybe we ask them, do you think just during inclement weather, you know, in bad weather, or should we, you know, from maybe November to?
Yeah, just in bad weather.
All right, well, I'll talk to, uh, I can't, there's a lady out there that writes the newsletters. I'll get with their board and see if maybe they could put something in there if you guys are okay with that.
You know, it'd be fun.
You need a motion to do that?
Probably, I'll make a motion if you want one, sir. I'll cite your motion.
I'll make a motion and I'll take charge of it. I'll talk to, um, Dogwood makes long association, uh, personally writes a newsletter for them. I'm not asking the residents in our township not to park our street in the weather. Snowing, icy.
So now you made a motion, I'll cite it.
Roll call, Dan?
Yeah.
Ben?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes. For, under unfinished business, don't want to go back, but, um, the other thing to check on that sink, uh, we need to put a trap in probably. Because once it does work, it's, it's plumbed right now without a trap. You can just put that in your notice to have them look at that.
For the trap, yeah, I think, nice.
There's, there's, well, yeah, if you cut it.
But you said, but it runs out to the ditch, right? So there's not really a purpose of putting a trap in because a trap keeps gases from coming back up to it. That doesn't get to the sewer system.
Proper way that I've always seen things plumbed. Uh, it also is, when it backs up, it's less likely to leak back up in. I don't know if you've looked at it very close, but the cabinetry and everything is pretty much ruined where it's leaked.
And that's probably from seventies?
Well, it's, the water damage is what's damaged it, not the age of it. The one water valve, uh, was tightened up, but the main damage is from where it's leaking back up where there should be a trap.
Alright, um. Uh, new business, um. I kinda got a heads up over the weekend about, uh, the side door, we're getting on, that was, the side door was hanging open over here, so we just gotta make sure that we're locking all the doors.
Yeah.
Locked, or it's shut all the way.
When I come to Saturday, about three thirty, that door was wide open.
We've got big issues with that happening on the east door and the community building too. Now, that, that one won't, you gotta really watch it, because it's, you, you can get in that door really easy.
We just gotta make sure, and I'll talk to the workers, just make sure that everything gets pulled shut, you know, very tight, so.
I'm more concerned with the one with the community building on the east end, because that, that happens all the time with that door.
Shut it, lock, when they do the checks on the building, they should.
Well, it, it's not a very secure door at all.
But it'll lock on the inside, just the lock.
Well, we talked about that before, but you've got the egress and everything, and safety issues you gotta deal with.
You wanna do that? Anyway, just, place it, we just gotta make sure the door did get shut tight, I mean, it was locked, the door was locked, it just wasn't pulled shut, so we gotta make sure that's getting done, if we don't have anything, uh, any problems with that. Under new business, I also had a question about the video cameras, um, in here, about, um, remaining in the box. I know, obviously, we don't have the, half of the box over there, so we'll make sure that we get that updated. I know one, three years ago, there was a motion made, right? Can you figure out?
It was on the door, it's copyrighted.
If I recall, the resolution said that if the, um, video cameras had to be within a designated, de-designated area, but the area was not actually designated. It's been changed several times and the room layout has been changed dramatically, because now you can't even get through here without tripping on Mr. Hupp's strike five. And, and now you also can't, can't get set up if you have more than one person there, so we need to take that into consideration. Because we have had probably five or six different people over the time that have set up and taped. And if we, you know, it's difficult with two, and Mr. Hupp's taking all this space there.
So, so what I'm getting at?
Getting past it, you've changed the format of the room, which has never been really been explained.
We could get smaller tables in here, we could, you know, have a smaller space if you wouldn't sit on my lap, but.
We could just go back to the way it was before, where all three trustees were in line, never happened.
I, I'm not here to entertain the public, I'm here to conduct business with the trustees and stuff.
That, that would, that would really.
You're right.
Well, along the lines of what I just said.
That would really help if you would sit in there.
It would allow all the trustees to be seen and heard and be respectful to the public they serve.
So anyway, so the question was brought up about the camera.
Watch it, could see all their, like, doing their business in public.
So it was brought up.
Be forced to put their back to them or anything else.
So it was brought up about, um, near the designated area, so I guess we can work on that, we had a box there. I've put tape down there a couple times and somehow it just magically disappeared, I, I must be clarified, I don't know. Um, so we'll get the box kinda.
That one's in the way, you can't get through there.
You can't even walk through there, no matter who's set up there, because.
Let me, let me, let me say it again, okay? If you'd sit over there and on my lap, we could get smaller tables in here, okay? But if we get smaller tables, you'll physically be sitting on my lap, Jeff.
Never been a problem before, I'm actually smaller than I was when I first started, I lost about three.
No, but they have more, it's a problem when somebody has sticky fingers and they put their stuff on top of yours and then they pick it up and take it when they leave, I'm not implying anything, I'm just saying, that's, that's what's gonna happen.
I mean, you're not implying anything, you're just saying, so.
So, so anyways, so.
I, I don't think that there would be any, but your environment, what would they think of, of that blockage there, I don't think that they would like that. You know, you, because you can't get past it.
Sure can, you can hear, you can hear the way it degrabs, we have plenty of doors in here, the, the.
You're asking for a discussion, that's how I feel about it.
My son's fireman, and he sat right there and didn't have any issue.
So the issue was brought up about, you know, the designated area and then also, um, on the camera just remaining on the elected officials and not on the audience. Um, was that in the resolution?
I'm not sure about that part.
Our prosecutor, the prosecuting attorney addressed that, uh, about two or three years ago when he was here, if you recall.
Do you remember what that did?
It's a public meeting, so anything that happens here, you know, if you're at a public meeting, it can be reported.
So the public can physically be in the camera?
They're in front of the camera, then they're reported, then they're, they're in the camera.
So the camera operator can physically put the camera on?
If you wanna get an update from prosecutor, why don't you do that?
So I'm asking, do you, do you recall that statement?
That's why I say, get, get it from prosecutor, I know, it, like I said, it's public, it's a public meeting, so.
So anyways, so for the resident that, uh, you know, commented about that, we'll have something by next meeting, we'll see if we can't get that square, uh, back to what it was.
If you do, you know, at least run it by legal, so we're not just spending months and months on it, get.
Good idea, Jeff, well, I came up with it, it's a great idea.
We don't just, we shouldn't be doing things willy-nilly, okay?
Yeah, you know more about that.
Uh, the only other thing I have is I know that we've been out working on roads, um, you know, weather's, whatever, fixing whatever, been out of the ice, you know, all that kinda stuff. The snow started to melt off, at that time of year, we have a lot of trash, um, up and down the side of the roads, so, I don't know. Um, we usually do stuff with the Boy Scouts every year to, uh, do at least one road cleanup. Does anybody have any ideas how we can maybe do some trash control on some of the roads, I know some on the freeway. Anyone has an idea, shoot, I'll do it.
Pac thirty-three generally does it in a equivalent, at least on the road that we adopted.
They do do Honda Hills, they talked about doing Somerset, um, I know usually they, it always conflicts with something else, and they usually just do, um, which is grateful, they just do Honda Hills, which, you know, I'm grateful for that. But, uh, does anybody have any ideas, I mean, any kind of community?
I, Pac thirty-three was recently rechartered to another group, so, and I don't know how big their, their group is. I'd be happy to give them a call, since I used to be very involved with that pack. And I'll ask them, uh, what they might be able or willing to do, and I can report back to next meeting.
I'll assume they have to report back to me, so maybe we can get something, if you know it works, uh.
Well, they, they don't, you know, they plan well ahead, like, when they schedule for the boys' activities. So it's not like they're gonna just jump out and do it.
Best time to do it is early spring, you know, before the, before all the weeds get grown up.
April's generally, I believe, when they, I think they did it last April.
I think we should make a road committee.
I think our committee's.
I don't know, I mean, if people have any ideas, let me know, and, uh, just letting. You know, nothing new business, size that road grant, do you? Jeff, size of the road grant, do you have anything else?
No, that's it.
Wanna pop up a road grant, what do you have under the road grants?
Well, I talked to Kurt today, you want me to go or you have?
I also talked to Kurt today.
Okay.
And I talked to Sue.
Good.
Um, the road grant was turned in for Somerset and Dogwood. Our share is thirty-nine thousand something.
Six seventy-five.
And it was approved, and I will be getting that money. Um.
Do you know that?
I don't know why.
That's if the bids are the, are same as what the quote.
Right.
Yeah.
If our, if the bids come in higher than what the engineers quote, then we're gonna have to pay more.
Right, right. Um, one thing about that road grant, when you guys originally voted on that, I know that you voted on just doing Somerset Road. When I turned in the road grant, I turned it in for Somerset Road and Dogwood Lakes Edition.
We talked about Dogwood and Somerset first.
Right, you guys talked about it at that meeting, and that was previously what you had applied for before. Um, and I turned it in for both.
Thank you.
Well, obviously, we got funded for it, that's great, so we're gonna move on to this then.
Right, right. Um, the only thing I suggest is that we amend the original resolution to include Dogwood Lakes, which is that we're applying.
I would suggest that we do that when the money's actually coming in, uh, how it could be set to actually do the job.
And why not now?
Do, do we have to turn in a bid?
You could, but it doesn't happen until July. It won't be till July first, but we actually proceed to.
It's actually reimbursed in a way. We, we get a bid, we spend the money, they give it back to us, so.
Hour shift, or the whole thing? Right, we have to pay the whole thing.
No, actually, that's not right.
It's like twenty-six to twenty-seven percent.
Yes, our share is thirty-nine thousand six ninety.
That's the old bid price, which it could go up, it won't.
Right, right.
So that's what we have to put.
Right, and then most that we can get from the state would be a hundred and twelve, you have that favor?
Hopefully, I don't find that one.
I, on my notes, it was the, the total was one fifty-two six hundred, the grant amount is a hundred and eleven thousand nine twenty-five. And our amount was thirty-nine six seventy-five, so my question would be, what is, what is the amount of money in that account? That we could, if it ends up being more than forty thousand?
If it ends up being, we have roughly seventy thousand for road projects. So if it does go over the thirty-nine thousand for our share, you know, we will not get more than a hundred and twelve from them.
Right. Mm-hmm, I mean, so, you said five seven, I mean, it's not double, or forty, or eighty.
As long as they follow the specs, it should, because the engineer did that estimate. So as long as they bid what the engineer said.
It doesn't cost us anything, which is good.
If you don't get a letter back on it until July first, you should be getting a letter, I don't know if it's gonna come to you January one, us. Between July first and fourth, I've already got it on my calendar, that if we don't, someone doesn't see a letter, we need to follow up. So we're not even gonna get the official document until beginning of July.
We can put it out from then, April.
April, alright, so let's wait till next meeting.
Yeah.
We, if we do, we might have to re-bid, because.
We're gonna just put it out for Ben and let him know that.
Well, at that point, though, we've gotta get it back to Kurt, and that's why you don't wanna do two relays, Kurt has to take it, go back at the estimate.
Otherwise, we could get the money in the beginning.
In July. Yeah, you can't, you can't, you can't.
You won't get the money until.
Yeah, you won't get the money.
The project's, the project itself can't start until July two thousand thirteen, and you have to get it done before July two thousand fourteen. So that's a year project, and that's what Kurt told me today.
We'll wait till next meeting for that on the agenda, that we're gonna merge the brand except this for us. That's good, that's good, definitely locked into that.
Now, the way I was alerted to the fact that, um, paperwork that was submitted, see, they can't redo it, so it was, we, we have to accept what they have, so fortunately, we have the funds.
Well, it doesn't need to be redone.
Well, luckily, like I said, we have the funds, because there isn't time to resubmit. But I thought, don't interrupt me.
Excuse me?
I said, don't interrupt me.
Excuse me?
When I spoke with, um.
He interrupts you all the time.
What are you doing?
Who cares, you individual.
What are you doing?
Interrupting you because you think you're so good, you walk on water, don't you, man?
When I get the table, I'll, I'm just talking about the business.
You can put the table on that end.
Take it, with you, take it home.
I'm going home.
Go to the table.
A trustee, a trustee from Lincoln Township, I saw him in the planning commission, he came over to me and was asking about this. And it was news to me that, because apparently a resident went to one of their meetings and announced to them that we were doing all of Dogwood Lakes, which doesn't match up, of course, with our, our resolution. So that's why I looked into.
We talked about last minute.
No, that's why I looked into Kurt about why, you know, he explained that. He already explained that, because our resolution was just to do Somerset. So the, what, the point I'm trying to get at is trustee Miller, uh, the reason he asked about it, which was an alert to me, hey, wait, we're not doing all of Dogwood Lakes. Well, we are, and it's fortunate that we can, and the resolution will resolve that, and we have the funds.
Doing our section.
But the, the point of him asking me that in the first place is, Lincoln Township, uh, his concern is who we're gonna be using, when we're gonna do it, and that type of thing. Because he wants to coordinate with them, if we can, if they're bored, for them to do their section of Dogwood, uh, either with the same person he contracted with or at the same time, so.
Will they pipe it up?
So now that we have it squared away, that, that we are gonna do it, and we can resolve the issues with the updated resolution either now or in July or between now and then. But we need to, uh, consider, I think it's a good idea if we can coordinate with them, get it all done at one time, because.
Good idea, good idea.
I don't think it's ever happened where Dogwood was, at least not in the last several years, where the whole thing was planned at the same time. And then we should also consider Rowley Hills, it's right there, if we do have funds. I don't know if that was on our plan for this year or not, but that particular one happens to be right in the hill.
We just done that two, three years ago, and Shelley Company done.
Well, the reason I bring that up there is because of the line on that, it's really, it's right in the middle of the road between two townships.
We, we, when Shelley done, uh.
Was that like two thousand ten then, it was done?
Somewhere, it, it hasn't been that long ago, a year ago.
Yeah, I was, I've been on that one recently, it doesn't need that.
No, it's just. Just bring it up, because it's right there in the line there with the two townships.
We went in with Shelley, uh, uh.
And Dave Miller also mentioned that we were doing that, which that, this isn't correct at all, whoever was given that information was wrong.
Rowley Hills, why didn't he say, state that?
I don't know, it wasn't, it was a resident, like I said, apparently went to their meeting and stated that we were doing all kinds of things.
Who's that saying?
And that's not, no, I hadn't, I worked in a ten to me, I spoke to trustee Miller. But that's how I found out that it had Dogwood on it. Kurt was really good about getting the information today, because I wanted to make sure we had it tonight to clarify any confusion.
I, well, so I didn't know, well.
That's why I said, um, when you've got presidents going to another township meeting saying we're doing something, and it hasn't been actually approved by this board, and.
Right, it's great, they do it a lot, right?
Then we need to look into it, so that people don't have this information. Alright.
No, the new business. Alright, move on, public comment.
I have a couple things to say, first thing, that's kinda, this could have brought up before. There are some vets in here, and if a person can get up, can't take a hat off, say, President, what do you fly? And it's like you guys get asked to leave. I'm tired of people just with bits back with flying. If they can't take their hats off, they got a problem. It's not, it's nothing to do with the government, nothing else, it's do with soldiers who lost their lives and the guys who still fight. That flag, what it stands for is freedom. And if you can't respect it, just get the hell out of my side. That's two times now it happened at this meeting. And the person in here, you should know, who's got a hat on, if you don't, it's got red.
I appreciate the comment, I mean, I'm fortunate.
I want to thank Jenny for at least giving two grand for the township. I really appreciate that, that saved township a lot of money, but I'm still taking money so much, the God's money.
Right.
And again, I want to say thank you, Corpetty, for taking probably fifteen hundred to eighteen hundred bucks from our, uh, township for something we did illegally. That's all I got.
Again, when somebody slams by making a claim illegal, I'm not, you know, you have a comment, you have every right to speak, but when you're making a false claim, I'm gonna go, yeah.
Why?
Nothing illegal, Kurt, our lawyers.
You say whatever you want to say, you was illegal.
Our lawyer's opinion certainly backs all that up.
It's costing us eighteen hundred bucks. Because so far, I'm hearing your word.
I used to have, I'll be able to walk off.
Well, I'd like seeing riding, I'm gonna, here, this man, that's like.
Is that it all?
That's it.
Thank you.
I have a question, um, for Jeff, about the ethics letter that he has on his YouTube video. Was that a board decision to contact the ethics board?
That was several years ago, that this board received that, that is a public record that you could request from Jenny.
And is there also a copy, do we also, um, have a public record of the letter that you sent to the ethics board?
I don't know, are you talking about the initial letter that?
The initial letter that, that started the whole mess.
I don't have that letter, I do have the ethics.
Okay, I'll, I'll get a copy from the ethics board, because the lady I talked to, um, said that the letter that they did send.
You're talking about like in, if, what was it?
Two thousand and six.
Two thousand and seven or six?
Yes, um, the initial letter that they received may have had erroneous information in it, and that's why they sent the letter that they did. And so I wondered if the board was the one that sent, that initiated that letter, and there should be a copy of it if a trustee sent the letter.
Well, when you read, when you get the request from Jenny for the letter we got to, that was presented to this board, it was very clear on there.
You have a copy.
Who initiated it, my name is very clear on there, they have a copy.
I know, and, and you should, and if you wrote the letter, then the board should have a copy of it, there should be a copy.
Do you want a copy of the original letter and the response?
Yes, the letter that Jeff sent to the board. Yes, the letter that Jeff sent to the board.
I'd recommend, I would recommend, like you already stated, and get it from them, so that's what I would.
Well, no, she wants to put on the board.
Well, then.
Yeah, but this board should have a copy of it if you were acting on behalf of the board. You can't just, you can't just willy-nilly mail out.
I'm sure, I'm sure you can, I'm sure you can get a copy of that.
Request a copy.
We don't, we don't.
Yes, I, I do, I am requesting a copy of Jeff's letter to the Ohio Ethics Board and a, and their response, a copy of their response.
We have the response.
Hey, when that went, when that went forward, it never went in front of the board.
No, it didn't, it wasn't required to go in front of the board. I already told you, it's very clear in the reply, that I initiated the letter and asked the question.
So, so please stay, please stay in the set.
The purpose of the Ohio Ethics Board is to ask them questions in advance of the action. And then that way, if you do take the action, you've got that to show that it was okay to do it. And this board already had it, and we didn't get any, any, this board did not get legal advice. I understand that I read what you were forwarding around. But this board has not, up until recently, you know, I've asked for a copy of what the board requested. Now, I don't know what you asked for or didn't ask for, I have seen your email, so I'm still, I'm still gathering facts on, on this thing.
Well, that's why I gave you the information from the Ohio Ethics Commission, and the, and you'll notice I searched specific situations in there. One of them says that we do need, we did need to contact a legal counsel, I then contacted legal counsel, and you have the reply to that. So there should be no further issues about Jack being, but there should be no further issues about Jack being on that board. And the video that you have on YouTube really is false.
There actually are issues still, and now that you brought that up, it's probably a good time. And one thing in her letter about, that I got at the end of the last meeting, it was very clear that they stated how sloppy things are, how the board needs to do things.
How'd you get that letter?
And the reason that I'm bringing that up is because we actually have three people on your board that were technically never voted on, and we need to, we need to start doing things properly.
Oh boy.
They were drawing a hat, there was no motion to, of the method to draw out of the hat. There was no, and as a matter of fact, there's one member, one resident that came that wanted to be included, that wasn't allowed to be in the drawing. After it was decided by that draw, there was never a motion to accept the results of that drawing. You know, so technically, we do, we need to start doing things right.
Were you there at that meeting? Were you at that meeting?
We need a motion to go.
Sure, I know it was.
No, it wasn't.
It was there.
Yeah, it was.
He was, he was there, were you there?
No, it was not behind.
Were you there? And why didn't you speak up then? How'd you get that letter, at the end of the last meeting?
I attempted to speak up, if you, if you get your public record audio, then people verify that. My point is, we need to, there are three members on your board that, that really should go through proper process, have us recognize and move a motion to accept them, to make sure everything is correct.
Ben, could I ask you right now?
Sure.
To make a motion for all of my members and alternates to be appointed to my board and accepted?
It's a very good idea. I'll, I'll move on.
Hold on. First, I want to give you a quick minutes, that Patty had requested, public record request of the letter that was sent to Ohio Ethics Board in two thousand six, seven?
I can give her the exact date.
And Mr. Corp Petty answered, she would like a copy of that, and also a copy of the response from the Ethics Board. So if you don't have either of those, then somebody from the board needs to come up with it. I don't have it.
The Ethics Board would be the one to contact.
You're asking this board?
They have any issues at all. They, they have the.
The trustee wrote it, and he's not even willing to give a copy to the clerk?
Yeah, I don't, I, I don't know that I even have the letter that was sent to them originally, you need to get it from them.
Aren't you supposed to keep that stuff?
Do you have a record to take?
Did you take your house to the line, Trudy?
A personal, a personal letter that someone sends, you know, it's potentially a public record. I don't have any problem with it, it exists, so it says you didn't get it.
Okay.
It's a non-issue, you, you need to be able to get it. Fastest way, you already alluded to the fact that you could get it from them, I didn't say that, okay, so, you know the source and where to get it.
He's stating that he didn't do it as trustee, so there could be an issue with the ethics.
Alright, so, we'll all move on. So you'd like to, like the board to make a motion to adopt all the members of the comprehensive plan committee to.
Wait.
No, zoning appeals board.
Zoning appeals board.
I'm sorry. Everybody on the zoning appeals board to remain on the board, and also the alternates, to remain as alternates.
Well, to be appointed to the board.
Are all of your expiration dates in line? They work as their one expires once each year.
Well, we can just leave all that as.
That's why I said, I'd, I'd wanna also include that, that we have separate assets.
Could you please name the members I'm.
Mike Skinner, Mike Zenzmeister, Dave Raffner, Harley Raffner, and Jeff. Hedges is our alternate, and.
Dusty.
Yeah, and I'm not sure, but Dusty's last name, Dusty.
Lunnington.
Yeah, he's an alternate.
Patty Bull.
Lee.
Lee.
What's his last name, Raffner?
Raffner. And since, after that motion, I got another one on that same topic.
Isn't this number comments?
Well, of course, stopping in her motion, and that's what we're doing.
Two over, two.
Two.
So what alternates?
Because you have an alternate, Patty.
Because you have an alternate, Jeff.
Jeff Baird, isn't he on that board?
No. Yes, Jeff hasn't been able to come to the last meeting.
I thought Jeff was on, I thought Jenny was on.
Yeah.
Jeff Baird is, is an alternate or a regular?
Yeah, he's a regular member.
So is the other alternate?
It's that, Dusty.
Dusty's an alternate?
Just for the record, if you, if you read the motion.
I don't know that there's been one made yet.
I, I moved to adopt, or to accept the five current members serving as zoning appeals board, and the two alternate members as.
They're not standing.
Their dates of the type, the type of message.
There were, you know, there's. Right, it can be, and we.
That's part of the same, that's part of the main motion.
So we're second. Roll call with Ben?
Yes.
Dan?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yes. And before we move on, since we've gone to that topic, it was brought to the attention that the zoning appeals board, when Mr. Scanlon retired, I addressed, I was here at the time and witnessed him go into executive session, which, you know, Patty assured me afterwards, I got your correspondence, that she had talked to legal and it was okay to do that. By law, there are only certain things you can do in executive session, she assured us that that was legal. But what was failed, you know, it was pretty sloppy, it didn't happen. What needs to, needed to occur is I needed to come out of the executive session, take actual roll call, and then at, according to your meeting minutes, what you actually had done is decided who was gonna be your officers. That needs to be done publicly, so the next motion is I would like to acknowledge officers. And if I, let's see if I get it right, Patty Bull and the president, vice president Dave Skinner, and secretary Mike Zenzmeister. So I'd like to move to, to acknowledge the officers. So that way, that'll be official, and then it'll be by motion as well by the board.
So it's my understanding, Jeff, that the board of trustees are not the ones who.
No, it's just acknowledging, it's acknowledging, you know, what you, it's just acknowledging that, that that is accepted, that's, you know, it's your board deciding.
Is that necessary?
Well, I, I feel like we should have one, that's why. Has nothing to do with being on camera.
Appeals board decides who their officers.
They, they decide it, it's just acknowledgement that we recognize that those are their officers. That's my motion. If you don't have a second.
Is there a second to the motion?
There's no reason not to do it, so. So there's no second to the motion, just move on.
Any other public comment?
Yeah, I do. This for Jeff and these false accusations about me. I think you would be a lot smarter to realize there's an actual video that is undocumented and uncut. What the video shows is you refusing to sit in your board-assigned seat, and then climbing over a tripod with making a ridiculous statement that you don't want your back to people. Everybody knows in here that you turn your back on the public in this township every chance you get, whether it's storm cleanup in the summer, snow pounding in the winter, road cleanup in the winter, or removing equipment from the park on your own, when nobody else wanted it removed. I mean, no one, even down to your voting in here, anything of substance, anything of substance. You either abstain, or you're newest nonsense, you stay to present. That's debatable also. You're no more, no more than a paranoid, delusional wannabe politician masturbating as a human being. There's been a number of people in here calling for you to resign, which would be in the best interest of the township. With that being said, we know you're not going to do that, because it would be in the best interest of the township. Besides that, it's a whole lot more entertaining watching you making ass of yourself. I'm gonna tell you one more thing. You might piss with my son, and you might piss with some other people in here, but you start on me, you pissed with the wrong person, and you can take that to the bank.
Is that it? Any other public comment?
I have. I have. I, I wanted to say all three of these things, and then you all can comment, because that way, like, three minutes doesn't get used up by somebody screaming in the middle of it. Okay, first thing. I would just curious, the variance was two hundred and fifty dollars from us, because it was two different tracks, and I just wondered where it goes, because I thought that the guys, they were handling it, should be compensated for something. They put a lot of time into it, a lot of emails, a lot of calls, a lot of traveling, a lot of everything. But I don't know where the two hundred and fifty dollars goes that we paid. Okay, second. Well, that was the second thing, why don't they get any compensation for it?
We can take it one at a time, we'll give you one for a minute.
Okay, okay. The ne, the next one is, okay, you guys keep doing this thing about this table, continuously about this table, okay? You go put Jeff over here, you guys will be there. Now, I know you all wanting to sit there because you wanting to sit there, but does it make sense for the crowd to be this way, and all of you are facing that way? The only way it makes any sense to me, if you put him there, is if you turn the table around. If he's gonna sit there, you're all gonna have your backs to us. And I don't, and I don't wanna see all of you from the back, because I can't hear you.
The mistake is.
But why don't you turn the table back around the way it was?
I'm not here to entertain the public, okay? You guys, the public is, is more than welcome to come observe. If you have questions, please ask, comments, please say, definitely. I'm here to conduct business with the board of trustees and the fiscal officer, that's what I'm here to do. We did sign, I wanna look my fellow trustee and my clerk in the face when I talk to them.
Okay, then use your microphone then, because we, I can't hear you.
I wanna look them in the face.
You got your backs to us.
And talk to them. I do not want somebody sitting on my lap and putting their stuff all over the line. I don't know if you watched the YouTube video, but some of my stuff walked off last time, okay?
Um, while you're on that subject, the one meeting that we were at, that I watched the YouTube video of the meeting after the meeting, after we all pulled away, that was the most disgraceful thing I have ever seen. I absolutely could not believe that out of, out of you, the way you screamed and carried on. I absolutely.
You know what I put up with?
It doesn't matter what you put up with. I never hear him stand up and scream at anybody. He, he has his faults, but I never saw it in any of the videos I've ever watched, and it was clear to the end.
But he tells them out.
And, and I just never heard Ginny to walk like that, and then somebody.
But then you should know, they could really make me mad.
Something up your butt, continuously.
I apologize for the comments I made, but let me tell you, if somebody stole from you, would you be upset? If somebody stole from you and brought it in like right in front of you, they took it, will not give it back, would you be upset? Honestly.
I sure, but you need to take it out.
What did he steal?
I'm not taking anything outside.
I mean, he should have shut the camera off, is what he should have done, because it was after the meeting.
Well, you all are a lot.
When you know the camera's on, that's what I can say.
I don't act any different when the camera's on.
I don't know if it's really good.
Because, because watch it again, because I pointed right at the camera, I said, I hope you get it on camera. I knew it was on, I wanted it to be on, okay?
And then the screaming, and the screaming, and the carrying on of some other people from the audience coming up and screaming. Although it'd be the zoning inspector, because he refuses to, call me, buy my name, get that on recording also.
Alright, so, you wanna take these one at a time?
Okay, the one about various amounts of, that was the first one.
You wanna answer, I wouldn't wanna guess?
Uh, part of it covers advertising for the meetings. And they, hopefully, haven't got a bill yet, but Mr. Zenzmeister should send me a bill of any postage that he paid, so that I can reimburse him for that, any copies that he had to pay for, any expenses like that. At this point, no, we do not pay the board for their time.
So that would come to two hundred and fifty dollars?
Probably not. No, you're right, probably not. You know, but it is volunteer board, and, and we're grateful that they all sit on that volunteer board. You know, obviously, the township doesn't do that many variances. If it came to where it was a every month thing, or every other week thing, probably would have to something.
There is also an hourly cost, the zoning inspector doesn't work for free, she's not a volunteer.
Sure.
Hers is hourly, so, you know, that's, pays her check.
Also, that's been noted on years ago. It's not something new, so nobody make it sound.
And it just seemed right to me, uh, two hundred and fifty dollars, if they at least get something.
And I don't know how many hours were involved.
A lot of time.
I mean, for the page hours.
Have you guys taken it to county yet? Have you guys went to county level yet?
Have I taken what we're doing? I'm supposed to wait until I hear from somebody to take some forms in and regen.
I'm just curious, that's the process, well. Keep going, you have another.
The other one was, uh, you know, if you guys are all gonna, if you're gonna put him over here, and you're over there, then I, I'm gonna have to sit over there to be able to hear. And, because this thing here starts up sometimes, the air conditioner starts up, and nobody uses the microphones, and it's, it's hard to hear you when you all have your backs to us.
But again, you know, I'm not here to entertain the public.
But are you here for us to be able to hear you?
And I can talk loud enough for you, you can hear it.
You can, you can catch it on the YouTube channel.
That's the only way I can hear any of it.
Alright, is that all the questions you have?
Well, when she reads the minutes, I can't hear it, but when she did, I couldn't hurt to hear it.
We don't read them anymore, they're up here.
Okay, I know you don't anymore, I know you don't anymore, but I couldn't hear it then anyway.
Yeah, their copy was, yeah.
I gave you a copy.
I don't think I have.
No, no, I can't, I'm sorry.
Was that, was that a just one?
Well, if, if you're gonna put him over here, then I'm just gonna have to get it really enough, because I'll have your backs. I just don't want to.
I'm not gonna be putting my back in public.
I just don't want to.
Oh, you do.
Go ahead.
I need to gain.
Now, the zoning inspector, just, just to clarify, letting you know if I'm wrong here or not, is paid by general fund, she's a hired employee, or is individually is a hired employee, has nothing to do with the zoning appeals money that's going in. Am I correct here?
Yes.
Okay, I wanna make sure of that, because from what I heard from Mr. Chorkenny, he's trying to throw that in there, you know, she gets paid.
How many hours has this particular case taken?
Wasn't talking to you.
I, I'm talking to you, I'm asking you.
And I'm not answering you, because this right now is public.
Well, I shouldn't be able to try to get that information from the time she used to.
Bring that up at zoning next meeting.
It would be nice to know exactly what the actual cost is.
Bring it up to the next meeting.
It's gonna vary from one to the next, but in this case, they paid for two hearings, there actually were two hearings.
Bring it up the next meeting.
Alright, I'm glad you said that, because I did contact Jenny, and I asked for several written requests. One of them was pretty straightforward, wanted a copy of any open file with the zoning office. There's several reasons I wanna add. I want that information. I wanna know anything that's open that we need to address, including also the non-zoning stuff.
Did you receive email from the zoning inspector about that?
I haven't received any.
Did you receive an email from the zoning inspector?
And the other reason that I think is really important, the reason I wanna see those files is because I don't wanna find out something that happened in 2002 or 2001, 10, 12 years later, and have, another resident have to go through this kind of thing. I wanna know every kind, every open file that you have, any file that hasn't been resolved.
Wait, is that kinda like the records I want for the park?
So, I requested them, didn't get them, I'm requesting again.
I haven't replied to that.
It's gotten to a point where I have to put my public record requests in at an actual meeting. And as an elected official, I shouldn't even have to put record requests in. I should be privy to those documents anytime I want to see them.
Well, let me tell you something, you're not God.
In writing. Zoning inspector's policy is in writing.
You can either file to the request that I put in, or I'll request it to the entire audit to see every piece of paper you have. It's your choice.
Send me the request in writing. And if you feel it's an issue, contact your attorney and see what they say.
Everybody here has had public records screening, and if you put in a record request.
Anything coming to zoning is in writing.
Definitely says it has to be in writing.
In zoning, in writing, case closed.
But it can't be open-ended, Jeff. You can't say, I want all these files you have, just to satisfy.
I'm not asking for something voluptuous.
Exactly, exactly is what you were doing.
It's called voluminous.
Exactly, that's what you're doing, Jeff.
Are there that many open files?
Give an idea what you're asking for.
I can't clarify.
He's giving me nothing. He's got two emails. He has given me nothing. He has not even responded. I'll get back to you later, nothing.
This is ridiculous.
The zoning inspector's policy, if you want any records, has to be in writing what you want so that those records are copied correctly. And no mistake to me, because Mr. Chorkenny likes to change things to make it to his benefit. I'm not getting screwed. He learned that the last time he was in office. He knows it's to be in writing.
The zoning inspector's policy does not trump the state law.
Yes, it does.
I don't.
In writing.
No, ma'am.
You want records from me, give it to me in writing.
By ethics law, isn't trumped by a motionist board.
In writing. Talk to your attorney.
First Amendment is not trumped by a motionist board.
In writing.
Call your board?
Forcing an elected official to put their back to the public is not, is not even a legal regulation. Again, to clarify, the raw start, and I'm requesting any files, any files, any files that are open at this point, I'd like to see the files.
You need to make a request to the right person.
The requests for township records go to the right person in charge.
If it came to the junk car, you can't know what kind of a car it was.
I'm telling Jenny, she's the one who requesting it.
You said you had records.
Do you understand what I want?
No, Jeff, you need to spell it out.
In writing.
You should talk to the zoning inspector, because she has those records.
In writing to the zoning inspector.
Just like you have the ethics letter?
What is this?
What is this?
I'm shamed at all. That's what this is.
If you wanna discuss this, you should have done it during zoning.
You're taking it on.
I don't call this comment, comment, I call it disappointing.
Yeah, there you are.
Exactly right.
You've got $250. You've got two emails.
All right, let her email you and tell you what he wants.
If I have to.
All right, quiet down, we're gonna go. Quiet down, we got a couple more.
I got a couple things I wanna ask. I think the first week of January, they had a meeting, we had a meeting called a correspondence meeting, or wherever you nominated.
Organizational.
Organizational meeting. I was at that meeting, and I thought everything was handled right. Now, if Jeff would have been here, if he didn't wanna sit there, he should have ended that meeting then and commented that he didn't feel comfortable at the meeting. That's one comment.
What specifically, what topic you're specifically talking about?
Assigned chairs. That's when that was assigned.
It doesn't matter when or where. And it violates the First Amendment, sorry.
Okay, anyway.
First Amendment. That's our organizational meeting, Jeff.
Yeah, you'd have been here if you had something to say about that here.
Exactly right. He could have commented.
There are many boards in the county that have assigned seats.
Hundred percent.
That's my first comment.
Absolutely pathetic.
What else do you have, Mr. Speaker?
Second comment, now this is a different thing. Beginning of this meeting, I understood Jeff is asking from Jenny a copy of every correspondence from 2011.
No, sir, just the anonymous stuff. That, I don't believe that's more than what, five or six pieces of paper?
Okay, well, this is, was all correspondence brought to the table at one time? Yeah?
The ones I requested, yes.
Okay, now, third, until recently, Jenny was reading all minutes. So she was feeding those correspondence back at the next meeting. Come forward. Now, Jeff, you record this meeting from starting to end, so you should have one you recorded. Every correspondence was brought to this table. And with that in mind, now, I think township should be finding ways to save money. Now, I don't know how much time it's gonna take Jenny to do all this, but with Jeff having all this here brought up at the meeting, read an amendment, she got recorded, he got recorded on YouTube, he got on Facebook. And my question is, Jeff, you still, with all this money, you still want her to spend township money, extra township money, and do this?
I don't have those things I asked for. I don't have copies of any of these. That's what I asked. The zoning inspector, I wouldn't even need copies. I wanna review the files. I wanna, if they wanna set a date to come down here, bring the open files, I'd be happy to come down and look at them. I wanna see what files are open and what business has not been closed. That's all.
And you don't already have all of these?
No, I don't have any of the zoning files.
Now, let's defend the pork committee again. I wanna see a report on the pork committee and what they plan to do and what they've done in the past. Let's argue this back and forth, Jeff. You're beating on the dead horse.
I'm not doing that. You're fighting a non-battle.
Well, I think all you guys, Jeff.
Well, you're done, Jeff. You have more?
Yeah, I'm done, Jeff.
Jeff, I think you need.
Sometimes it goes in the conversation. I wanna make sure that you.
Yeah, you gotta comment your back.
Jeff, you need to explain to Mrs. West what happened to her $275.
$250.
She wrote, it's bugging her, please explain.
I wanna know where all he goes past the stamps.
That's what it goes into the general fund.
I thought Jenny answered it pretty good, but you do have to consider that it's hourly referred to on inspector, and that should help also.
So zoning inspector gets paid out of that, is that what you're saying?
It goes in the general fund, okay? It all goes in the pool, okay? But then the zoning inspector gets paid out of that pool, so essentially, yes, essentially, no.
So if there isn't anybody paying to do that, and say she just gone around citing violations, she would still get paid, right?
There was a point in time, there was a point in time where there wasn't a fee. And what we found out really quick, and I brought to the board when that first started, that I felt that there should be a fee because the ones incurring should be paying for it, not everybody else. So that was the reason there was a fee put in place in the first place. And it should be just covering the cost of the actual.
But it seems like your volunteer people, they, they, I mean, I know that I heard they were so glad it was going to be over because they were putting in so much time. And I feel bad for her, just listening to the way she's reprimanded continuously, just volunteering. If I was her, I'd be gone, out of here. I wouldn't put up with that. I wouldn't do it for nothing.
I find it very, very disturbing.
You wanna see some signatures that a volunteer put on a piece of paper to purchase a piece of equipment that the township has lied before now, okay?
Well, so what? I would quit. I would quit, is what I'm saying. What incentive does a person have to be a volunteer that isn't, you know, Bart probably isn't a trained person to do all of this. But she's doing it for nothing.
It takes a really strong person a lot of courage to. I think she deserves a lot of credit.
Maybe she doesn't do the things that she's getting yelled at on purpose. Maybe she hasn't been trained to do all those things and all this stuff.
Maybe somebody else would counter how to do it.
No.
Yeah.
Maybe they should just get rid of the park committee, they won't have that problem.
It's very disturbing.
I think that's what the end result is probably geared for. I think that's what everybody's trying to do, actually.
I agree.
Get rid of the park committee.
I agree with you. I mean, I was saying, I see that we should look out, you know, pick out the positive things probably before the next.
If I was her, I wouldn't want any part of this.
And I know why she doesn't, because she's a part of the community, you know, and she takes pride in her.
I feel bad for her. Every time I come in here and she's trying to, to report.
She does an awful lot of stuff that she doesn't get credit for. She takes care of all the reservations.
Don't get in the way, right?
The key to the people, they need in early, need out early, have special arrangements, it's all part, always doing things.
Is there anybody in here that would volunteer to take her place?
Well, done by the trustees.
I'm on one board.
Somebody wanna take her place, go ahead?
If the trustees need to do it, that's what we will do.
Why don't you do it?
I don't want a part of it. I've seen enough.
Well, why don't you have somebody else there?
Why don't you be quiet?
Hey, come on, come on.
I can talk, I can speak, you know?
I mean, I agree with you. I know we should pick out.
Yes, she puts up with a lot of hassle.
I agree, I agree, you know, but when you're asked or expected to do something, I mean, you should probably do it.
I spent eight years working for this township. I don't care if it's like you.
And that's what makes the township around.
I'm all tying it up.
That's what makes the township around, it really does. You know, volunteers, it's not about sitting up here and getting paid all that kind of stuff. Volunteer will make it happen.
So we need some new volunteers. People want volunteer, let them volunteer.
No, thanks.
Well, we can't have paid volunteers, so.
Well, I think there is a possibility that we have to look into it, but for the boards, there might be a legal way to pay for mileage. I don't know, but I think it is possible. We have to check.
This township does not give a person an incentive to want to be a volunteer from any time I've seen.
I totally agree, totally agree.
That is the facts.
That's right.
That's absolutely true.
I don't wanna volunteer, Jenny.
And it's easy to see the source of.
I quit volunteering when he got reelected.
It's not just him. It's, 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 it's not just him.
The information's all there for anyone that wants to take a look at it and see.
Prior to a year ago, we had everybody working together hand in hand. We could ask anybody to do whatever, you know, and they would do anything. They never backwards to the township prior to January.
If you look back at the meeting minutes, you can't, I mean, they're very subjective, but if you wanna look at the actual, if you wanna get the tape recording, you can't hide all that. It's very clear that the people on this board were trying to get rid of our park committee or anything they could to tear down those volunteers. It's well documented.
Are you referring to me? Are you referring to me?
I think I explained what I had to say.
Yes, sir.
I'm talking about the prior board.
Are you referring to me? I was on the prior board. I wanted to do away with the park.
I'm referring to the entire board.
Review the minutes, Jeff. I did not wanna do away with the volunteer board, okay, the park committee board. I thought it was a good thing. People were there for the right reason. Exactly, exactly. Anybody else have a public comment? I got a problem, go ahead.
I, I just want to thank the gentleman, the variance committee. They were very, very good. And they treated us like we made in the state, not committed a crime. I, I didn't believe that it would be that easy, that they would actually, or they could see what are, they saw what we did wrong and made the right decision.
I'm glad, I'm glad it went, I'm gonna say easy, I know it wasn't easy, but I'm glad that, you know, that they.
They had to do a lot, but we didn't have to do anything. They did it all for us, and it was just a blessing, man. I just, I ask that the good Lord bless them.
Well, I'll definitely pass it along to them.
I mean, I thank you, I appreciate it.
But there was some confusion because we were told to do this, and then Mr. Zensmeister would email me and tell me, don't, don't do this. And then we were told to do this, and then he would say, no, don't do this, have the surveyor get ahold of me. And then we all got, then we kinda got yelled at because we didn't have a, a survey all done, ready at that meeting, but we were told not to do that.
The yelling that occurred was totally unacceptable. The yelling that occurred was totally unacceptable, and I totally agree that the board showed a really good example of the way business should be conducted in a township, as far as.
Right.
We'll put my stuff over here.
Okay, the motion was made, seconded, and appealed. First check is for economic signs, $74.77.
What's that? Political signs, he's keeping them signed, so I'll have to have you replace it.
He sent us that last card, Jeff. You read this for purpose order or something?
I ordered a lot of signs for the person. I ordered 25 math cards.
You don't look at politicians, they're telling their lies.
Next check is 4155. Jeff Chorkenny? 4160, and the township is Brown Rockins 232.
Let me check something. See what this is, this is two days ago. These guys dropped us off on Sunday night at 1:00. Jenny might not get to it until Sunday. Together. So you meet, every meeting, every meeting. Don't let her undo it.
6281.
That's what I want to do here.
Yeah, it's not, it's not that big. 4157, that's 4297.
You were paid, huh? All them hours, he plowed snow.
My last check, the miner refused to sign, I wanted to make sure I go home with it.
Hey, I wanna make sure, hey, let me tell you something, Jeff. I wanna make sure I go home with all my paperwork, if somebody walked out of some last meeting. Where's the rest of it? Did you bring it back? Do you wanna return it? Do you wanna return the stuff that you stole from me last meeting? We haven't adjourned a meeting, right? Make sure you put that in there, Jeff.
We're still writing checks, I don't know what.
You're writing checks?
I wanna comment on returning. Oh, did I, did I misspeak and say it's right?
He said you were writing checks.
You just so we have it straight, I'm signing.
I said he's signing checks, not writing checks.
Thank you for the. I'm glad people are actually listening. The next one's. I guess this checks for lots of, what is this, for tolling or something?
This pay off. Pay off will be your friend. Put the form down for those who get fixed.
Probably, does he just put it in there?
Probably just make it that, let's do this and fill.
This check 4169, oxygen respiration, $125. I would like a copy of that.
The elementary school?
It's called under the elementary school. I was supposed to just look at it and read, you actually want a copy, right?
I want it, she has.
Four one six eight, seventy-seven dollars, thirty-five cents.
I haven't seen that outside of him yet, so.
You're the only one. Then you're the only one.
Macallan parts, twenty-seven, nine. Why do we have two, two center states?
What are you saying? They're different stores.
Well, they're, they're separate accounts.
They're independent, yes?
Jenny, you should've known the job, right?
First time.
Maybe Jeff can give us some lessons. He's had all training.
Four one six five, forty-seven dollars, seventy-five cents.
I'm, I'm impressed with the seventh area. I don't have meetings like this.
Did you see people, seven areas?
Ask her how they, ask her how many people come to you.
I can say something, I can say something for you, Mrs. Lucker. That's why the cloud is leaving you.
One, 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 six, three, Emmett, you know, hundred and four dollars. Ninety cents.
Actually, there are two ads on this.
We got this real, it's all good, yeah. Seven feet. I think it's all around the table. Them gone.
Make a little oil company, one thousand, forty-one dollars.
Close it down in there on this end.
Oh, he always gave this to you guys.
If anybody start to holler and yell.
Have any of them looked up?
Looks like the last share, four one six one, my public. Hundred fifty-eight dollars, thirty cents.
We couldn't make, make that a, some help. I don't know whether where.
Do I have all the checks?
Somebody called the township.
Yes, sir, I moved to June.
No, we still.